Good morning, everybody. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for or variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All video participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist. When your item is being held during this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during your video appearance, and the host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect that instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, your address, and your email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. All right, for the hearing today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired, and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes, five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you're reaching your time. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and then make a presentation to the committee on the application. Again, please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support of the application or not, or opposed, will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on people in the hearing room first and then those participating over WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has the opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the other speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Okay, before we get to the first item, are there any confirmation of minutes that we need to adopt?
Mr. Chair, thank you. We have two sets of minutes to adopt this morning. We're going to start with March twentieth. Present was Ms. Casson, Mr. Allison, Mr. Kubo, Mr. Niffeldt, and Ms. Sankar.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Do I have a motion to adopt those minutes, Mr. Niffeldt? Second by Mr. Fazeli. Okay, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our second set of minutes to adopt is April third. Present was Mr. Allison, Mr. Niffeldt, Mr. Mazjari, Mr. Schwartz, and Ms. Sankar.
All right, do I have a motion? Mr. Mazjari, second by Mr. Fazeli, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. That carries. All right, for our morning session, do we have any declarations of interest of the panel or staff for any of the items in our morning slot? All right, there are no declarations of interest. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any deferral requests this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have two items that are requesting a deferral from the agent, item number one and item number eleven. Why don't we start with item number one first, fifty-eight hundred Young Street?
Just give me a moment here. All right, item number one for the day. The address is fifty-eight hundred Young Street. The purpose of the application is to increase the heights of the podium elements of the building and the daycare building, and to reduce the required vehicular parking rate for residential uses. On file, two variances related to the building height and one related to reduction in parking spaces. I have on-file package material from the applicant, staff report from community planning, and a letter of support from councillor Chang. And we have our rep in person today, welcome.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Nev Adams. I'm a planner at Bowsfields, Inc. Our office is located at Three Church Street, Suite two hundred in the city of Toronto. We are the planning consultants to Times Fifty-eight Hundred, Inc., which is the owner of the property, and we're requesting a deferral today in order to add an additional variance. So the additional variance is a result of an increase in the podium heights of the East parcel, and it will require a revised zoning waiver and public notice.
Okay, very well. That sounds reasonable. Do we... We have another speaker on this item.
Oh, yes, Tony Volpintesta. He wasn't able to make it today, apologies.
Okay, very good. Actually, in addition, we also have a neighbor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We confirm that neighbor just listened.
Fantastic, all right. So seeing that there's no other speakers to this item, it looks like we can take it into committee? All right, so let's take this into committee. We have a deferral request. Yes, Mr. Mazjari.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to defer this application as per applicant's request to include an additional variance.
All right, do I have a seconder? Second by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Your deferral request is approved.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have another deferral.
We do, Mr. Chair. It's item number eleven. It's the last item in the morning.
All right, seven ninety-six Glen Karen Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new four-story apartment building. We have a number of variances before us for this application, including one variance to permit a dwelling unit in an apartment building, a building height, side main wall height, number of stories, number of platforms at or above a second story, number of platforms on a front wall, number of platforms on a rear wall, number of accessible parking spaces, and number of visitor parking spaces. On file, material from the applicant, memo from transportation, memo from urban forestry, two letters of support from people in the neighborhood. And we have our agent in person or online?
Right there.
Oh, fantastic, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I'm Greg Ewens with Patori Planning and Management, representing the owner of the site, fifteen fifty Kingston Road. We, for you today, requesting a deferral. I note that we have no comments and opposition from any city agencies. We do have a memo from Transportation Services that really is requesting to meet to discuss the parking variances, specifically to account for accessibility, pickup and drop-off, and other operational aspects of the building on account of Glen Karen not having parking permissions, apart from at very specific hours of the day. So we have reached out to Transportation Services to coordinate that meeting. We would like to have that meeting. That may result in further variances, that we would have to get a revised zoning review, additional notice, and then come back before you with an updated application and hopefully having resolved transportation's comments.
Okay, so as I understand it right now, the application as presented doesn't have any parking on the site. You may or may not be looking to add a parking space, I presume?
Yeah, we're looking at options.
But to be determined, okay.
Yes.
All right, very well. We... Also, we have some other speakers as well. You have Mr. Spoke?
I'm the owner.
Oh, the owner, all right, very good. Okay, and we also have a neighbor. We have a neighbor online? All right.
Yes, we're here.
Good morning. Your name and address, please.
So it's Ian Croll and Allison Croll, and we're at two oh seven Glen Park.
All right. And so today, the agent for this application is requesting a deferral. Do you have any comment specifically to the deferral request?
Not for the deferral request. We will receive a notice, though, is that correct?
You will receive a notice, and if the application comes back to us, you will have an opportunity to, you know, present a planning rationale at that time.
And it'll be in the same form that we received this initial notice?
You got it.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
That's fine.
I should ask too, no objection then to the request for deferral?
No objection.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other speakers, staff? And nobody else here? We'll get the agent back. So they have no objection to a deferral request? It looks like we can take this into committee if it's all right with you?
Certainly. If the adjacent property owner is still on the line, I'd welcome an opportunity to speak with them, as I don't know what their concerns are specifically, but they know that they may have some. So if we dropped off notice, we had a community meeting for this application on our own accord, and my contact information is on the notice the neighbor would have received. So I'm happy for them to reach out and have a conversation.
Yeah, thank you for that offer. You did get the name and the address, two oh seven Glen Park Avenue, Ian and Allison Croll?
Yes, I can confirm that with the Secretary Treasurer as well.
Very good, all right, thank you. Okay, let's go into committee. Yes, Mr. Niffeldt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant the opportunity to address the concerns of the Transportation Services Department.
Right, do I have a seconder? Yes, Mr. Mazjari, all in favor? That's unanimous, deferral is approved. Thank you, all right. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I believe we have no other deferral request, but just to confirm, no files to be closed this morning?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Through you, there are no files to close this morning, and no further offers of, sorry, requests for deferrals in the morning. Why don't we start with item number two?
Fantastic, thank you. Item number two, eighty-six Bruce Wood Crescent. The purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a garage and rear balcony. Variances for lot coverage, building length, and rear second-floor balcony area. On file, I have material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry, and a letter of concern from fifty-nine Prince Charles Drive. We have our agent with us? Online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Larry Swallem. My address is three three nine one County Road, one twenty-four Duntrune, Ontario.
All right, Mr. Swallem. Going to ask for a brief presentation from you. Staff will get the five minutes up on the screen, sir, and the floor is yours.
Sure, the... Thank you to committee chair and members for your time in this matter. The... During the design process, we just found that the zoning was restrictive, fairly restrictive, only allowing a depth on the first item, a depth of building of seventeen meters. And so we wanted a little bit more, which took us over that, and which also took us over the allowable lot coverage. There is also a request for a larger balcony on the rear of the property. The zoning bylaw was calling for four square meters, and we're looking for an increase to nine point six four square meters. That space is only accessible from the master, from the primary bedroom on the second floor. So it's not a maximum use, usually just two people. So it's not really a big ask, but that's basically what we're looking for.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I have a question just regarding the second-story platform. You are requesting a variance for the area of that platform. It's variance number three. I'm just wondering how and if you've had some consideration for some oversight and onlook into the adjacent property? It's... Perhaps you can provide also a little bit more context. I'm just looking on the site plan. It's hard to understand because the neighboring buildings, the building extents of the neighboring buildings haven't been indicated for us on the site plans. Kind of hard to see how and if there's some onsite or overlook issues that may be concerned.
The... There would be a slight overlook issue. Like if we wanted the balcony, if we go that the length or the width of that portion of the building, it would be thirteen feet wide, and if we abided by the zoning bylaw, that balcony would only be three foot, four inches wide. So it wouldn't be really usable for anything. So we want to extend it out so it covers that portion of the heated space below. And we realize it's adjacent to, it's adjacent to the property beside, but we would construct a privacy fence on that balconies to, so that there was no overlook on that side. There are some large trees at the back, which really restrict the view from the rear properties. So there's really, really not much of an effect.
Can we... Do we have any photographs of the rear yard we can pull up just to show which trees we're referring to?
I forwarded... I forwarded those to zoning. I don't know if I have them.
I should mention too, I stand corrected, the site grading plan, actually, it does indicate the building extents of the neighboring buildings. I was just looking at the site plan, but it is indicated on the site grading plan document. So we'll take a look at that. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and ask if they have any questions right now. No questions, okay. All right, sir, it looks like we can take this into committee for a decision unless there's anything else?
We have a speaker that we can identify online. If you wouldn't mind, we just want to unmute this person for a quick second?
Sure, just to our agent, just hold on for a minute, see if we have another speaker.
... of eighty-six Bruce Wood.
Sorry, good morning, just give us your name again and address, please?
Yeah, Morale, Morale Paris, eighty-six Bruce Wood Crescent.
Ah, the immediate neighbor, okay.
No, I am, I'm the owner. I am the owner of home.
Oh, I see, so you're just listening in, this is your agent, then?
This is my agent, yeah, I was just going to come off and elaborate on what we're asking for, for the balcony, since we'll be the ones using it.
Sure, I just be mindful, I just got to be mindful of the time, just because generally we give five minutes total for both speakers, but I do acknowledge that your agent didn't quite use up the five minutes, so I want to provide you an opportunity to add a few comments, if you like.
Okay, great, yeah, of course, we, first of all, thank you everybody for your time, Mr. Chairman and the committee members, it's really appreciative. We, we went and spoke to our neighbors, obviously, we wanted everybody in support and, you know, hoping there's no objections, and we actually have signatures that I've, we've uploaded through Jenny into the, into the folders of our direct neighbors saying we're in approval, and, you know, in terms of sort of the objection about the second floor rear balcony, we sort of feel the concern is a bit overstated, the balcony is modest in size, it faces our own yard, there's a lot of yard in the back, and it doesn't really create any sort of unusual sightlines, certainly no more than like a typical second floor window, and I think in, you know, the objection also was mentioning aesthetics, which I think is super subjective, and to Larry's point, we fully intend to install like a privacy panel on the side closest to the property line. At the end of the day, we're really just sort of asking for like a slightly large balcony, obviously not, not a size of a dance floor, just something that the two of us can, can use. We're just a young family with two kids, two kids looking to build our future home here, and we're really excited to be part of the community.
All right, thank you, and to your comments, to your submission earlier, you have been in discussion with the both immediate neighbors, then?
We have, yeah, I, I'm not on camera, but I do have like signatures on a letter, I don't know if you can put me on camera, but Jenny did upload it as well.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to look at it anyways at this point, but I will, I'll take your word for it. Also, I will just put out there, the public notice was circulated, so even if the agent or applicant didn't have discussion with the neighbor, they would have had, you know, sufficient notice and the opportunity to comment if they had some concerns.
Great.
Okay, any, so no other questions from my colleagues, oh, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you indicated that you've had conversations with the neighbor to the west, and that you are going to install a privacy panel, which is in response, I think, to the chairman's point about privacy from the second floor balcony. Can you describe to me what you're talking about when you say a privacy panel, what have you got in mind?
Yeah, like, like essentially, so the, I guess it's the right side? The right?
It's the west side.
We're facing west.
Yeah, the west side, sorry, exactly, the west side, so like, nothing clear, right? Like, nothing that is like see-through, that you can see in, see out, it's very much sort of like, what you?
Almost like, like a fern, like we put like, like a bush almost there along, along the side edge of the balcony?
Yeah.
So that none of our neighbors can see into our balcony as well as into our primary bedroom.
Yeah, I will, I will also state, though, the west neighbor that we are talking about is the, like, they are one of the signatures that we received, they have no issue with it. There's also very large trees in the backyard, the balcony is very far away from the backyard neighbors, so we really don't see how it's impeding into their.
You don't have an objection from the neighbors to the west, and you're also, you're thinking that you might put in screening, but you said a panel, but then in your description you were talking about planting, or the agent was talking about planting, so the form of the, of the screening is to be determined, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, I think it's more lingo, we're not builders, so I don't know exactly like the, like the material, Larry, if you can come on off mute, that would be awesome.
It would be, I, I, we're thinking it would be something opaque that you can't see through, but it would allow some breeze, but it would definitely impede any overlook onto the adjacent property from that side.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Sorry, just a follow-up question, so your neighbor asked for that screen, or you're proposing that?
No, no, we're just proposing it, just to be mindful of everyone's privacy.
I think it's not helping.
Yeah, no, no.
It's creating more mass.
I agree.
Like on second floor, I wouldn't put it, I'm looking at the rear perspective, and I think it's just creating more mass at the back.
Yeah, it's always a, it's always a consideration with these screens, right? Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much to our agent and applicant, let's take this into committee for decision.
Thank you very much.
Who would like to get us started? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any difficulties with this application, the only issue that I wanted to explore a little bit more was the second floor balcony, and I agree with the chairman that there is potential overlook, but it sounds as though there's, there's been constructive conversations between the two owners, and there hasn't been a decision raised about putting a screen in. I also agree with my, my colleague that in this particular case, because of where the balcony is and because of the access room, it's unlikely to be heavily used, and the, putting something like a full fence up, I think would basically take away from the building and not really be necessary, so I'm inclined to recommend that the application be approved with only one condition, that is forestry two.
Okay, all right, looks like we ready for motion, so, Mr. Niffel, that, we have that as a, that's a motion, formal motion?
Yes, it is, thank you.
All right, so Mr. Niffel put a motion on the floor for approval with the condition of urban forestry number two, that's second by Mr. Marziani, all in favor, all right, that's unanimous, the application is approved. Congratulations. All right, item number three, ninety Winford Drive, the purpose of the application is a project involving a conversion of five floors of an existing office building into self-storage. We've got variances for self-storage use, would require reduction in parking spaces, it's another variance, and as well as the number of loading spaces, need a variance for that. On file, material from the applicant, memo from transportation, and an email from community planning. We have our agent in person, welcome.
Thank you, Morgan Dundas with Sajeki Planning, I'm not sure if you want me to give a presentation, I have one prepared, and I also submitted one through the, through the committee, so I'm, I'm in your hands, and happy to give a quick, quick presentation.
Sure, we do see the, I, we have reviewed the presentation material, I can't speak for my colleagues, I personally don't need one, I'll ask my colleagues whether or not they need a presentation, or if they have any questions. We have, but we have a question, so maybe just a question and then?
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Niffel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, could you tell me when, if this is approved and you proceed with the work, what percentage of the building will still be used as office, or is the entire building by this point all storied?
Through you, Mr. Chair, excellent question, so we're preserving the, the uppermost floor, it's an interesting configuration of the building, so there's a walkout at the back, so technically the, the building is six floors, so we're converting one to five. Unfortunately, the office market right now, as I'm sure you can all appreciate, is, is abysmal, and, and, you know, there's really no resurgency anytime, anytime soon, but, so it'll be that, that upper fifth floor or sixth floor, the top floor, that'll be preserved as office. Hey, you're welcome.
Any other questions? It looks like we can render your decision, go into committee? Yes, all right, okay, let's go into committee now. Mr. Bartolo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I remember this previous application, in principle, I have no issues with it, we're converting an existing building to a different use that's already been approved, community planning has no objections, transportation has no objections, I don't see an adverse effect on the local community, therefore, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application.
All right, second by Mr. Fazeli, all in favor. All right, unanimous, you're approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, item number four, Three Belton Road, the purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by adding a second story, constructing a new basement walkout, attaching a garage, and adding a new rear deck and front porch. The purpose requires three variances, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, and lot coverage. On file, we have material from the applicant, hold on. We got a little, the, our three variances, this side yard setback. Does anybody have their audio? All right, a little bit of feedback there, okay, so we've got our three variances on file for this, this application, I have material from the applicant, memo from community planning, a letter of support from one, two, and five, Belton Road, and one letter of objection from an area resident. We have our agent with us. Hello? Your name and address, please?
Anybody have their audio? All right, a little bit of feedback there, okay, so we've got our three variances on file for this.
Can we?
Application, I have material from the applicant, memo from community planning.
We're just experiencing some technical difficulty.
From one, two, and five, Belton Road, and one letter of objection from an area resident. We have our agent with us.
Yes, I'm Joe DeVita, online.
Okay, sir, is there another agent as well with you?
My name is Joe DeVita, eight Samson News, North York, Ontario.
Okay, and are you also here with Mr. Ferrone? Is he going to be speaking as well?
Okay, so we've got our three variances.
Mr. DeVita, if you can hear me, if you have more than one device on, you need to turn it off, you need to turn one device off, and only use one device to speak, otherwise we will have a continuous echo from our end. So if you're watching on YouTube and you're, say you're using a computer or phone, you've got to at least turn one of them off and only use one electronic device. Thank you.
Mr. DeVita, did you hear that? Hello? Can you hear us?
Good morning.
Good morning, hello?
My apologies for the technical difficulty, good morning, Mr. Chairman and committee members, my name is Joe DeVita, agent for the owner for Three Belton Road.
All right, Mr. DeVita, are you, you have another agent here with you today, Mr. Ferrone? Or is it just yourself?
Just myself.
All right, going to ask for a brief presentation, let's get the five minutes up on the screen.
Essentially, this application is to accommodate for a garage to be built on the one side of the property, I have been in conversations with the city staff, and after conversations with them, we would comply with the recommendations of increasing the side yard setback on one side from point four-three meters to point five-eight meters.
Okay, so we'll be modifying variance number one.
To the garage construction.
Okay, we got that. Okay, all right, thank you. We have some other speakers?
Okay.
We'd like to hear from, and then we'll come back to you, all right?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we tried to send a request on mute, a lot on order, they need to approve it.
My name is Natter, and, sorry, is the question, do I approve this?
Before we get to that, just give us your full name and address, please.
My name, excuse me, Natter Bilata, five Duncurn Road.
All right, thank you, and you, you have some concerns you wish to raise about the application, sir?
I don't have any concerns yet, I'm, I'm learning here from this call, but I'm, you know, I'm, yeah, I just, yeah, I don't have any concerns to raise just yet.
Okay, well, this is your time to speak, just so you understand the process here, so the agent or applicant's going to present, which they did, the next step would be for any those either in support or opposing to put their comments forward, and then I'm going to provide that agent an opportunity to respond, that's it, so.
Okay.
I, perhaps you have some questions or anything that you'd like to put out there, and then I will ask the agent to respond to them for you.
Yeah, okay, so I, I, I think the, the main thing is that the balcony is going to, they're going to increase the balcony size?
Yep.
Can't really see on this drawing, but, and how much is it going to overlook over your neighbors' or the neighbors' lots?
Yeah, so we specifically, just to make reference here to a specific balcony, we're talking about the terrace off of the master bedroom on the second floor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Or concerns?
Nope, those are my main questions.
Okay, for sure, okay, thank you, Mr. Natter. We have another speaker?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So, thank you, my name is Zishan Macadam, five Belton Road, so the property just adjacent to Three Belton, so, so what, we generally have provided a, you know, we're okay with, we've actually signed off in terms of the support, the only question we had was, same question as was raised by five Duncan, Duncan, it's the balcony, so we would like to, love to hear more about that, it does, it seems to be overlooking our backyard very clearly, so wanted to, to, to learn more about that, and I know it's not part of this hearing, but just also wanted to hear if there were any plans to erect a fence on, I guess it's the west side, right, adjacent to Five Belton, there are, there is some vegetation there that's right at the boundary, some of it has been, you know, taken off, it does provide some privacy, it just provides some noise reduction and all, some of it was taken, or I, I, I understand for construction purposes, because it was in the, in the way, but just wanted to understand if there are any plans to erect a fence, and if there would be an additional, you know, especially the vegetation that's, or the hedges that are on our property, property line, we have provided our survey plan that we had done a couple of years ago, just so that there is ease of reference to the survey company who had come in earlier, so hoping that would be helpful, but in general, we are supportive, just have these couple of questions to ask, thank you.
Okay, very well, I have a question for you, sometimes with the Okay, very well. I have a question for you. Um, sometimes, uh, with these balconies, particularly when they're raised up or they have some onsite or overlook issues, we, um, we kind of raise the question of whether or not privacy screening, uh, would suffice. Uh, if you were listening in earlier, you'll, you would have heard that, uh, you know, in some cases, uh, you know, privacy screening actually, you know, does more harm than good, uh, because you have to be aware that, uh, while you, privacy screening can help mitigate privacy, it also creates more bulk enassing on the, uh, building. Um, I should ask you, uh, have you had any discussion with the applicant or agent about, uh, privacy screening on the second floor balcony? And, uh, also, uh, it would be helpful to understand, uh, sort of your preference, uh, for that screening, uh, if that, uh, does come up. And that's, that's, uh, question for the neighbor at number five, uh, Belton Road.
Uh, thank you for the question. Sorry, I was on, I was on mute. Um, so that's a, that's a good question. We haven't had any, any discussions, um, with the builder or the, uh, the neighbors as yet, uh, but we would love to hear more, um, um, you know, more details about the privacy screening, and if that's something that could be a solution, um, certainly would like to learn more.
So you're not, I mean, you don't have a preference for, y- you may have, you may, you're not, you're unsure, is, is, uh, my understanding. You're unsure whether or not privacy screening, uh, is a, is preferable for you? And that's okay, I just.
So the, the thing is, I really, yeah, unsure and I don't really understand exactly. Our network, that, that would be something that we, maybe we can discuss. You know, obviously, we are neighbors, so we can always, uh, discuss that with the builder or with the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Figure out if that's something that's, that's workable.
Yeah, absolutely, okay. So, um, we've heard from both neighbors. Oh, we have a question from one of my colleagues, Mr. Nipphil.
Mr. Chairman, I, there's an issue that I think might bear on this discussion, and that is, the, the drawings themselves have, um, there's no variance for the, for the second floor terrace. And what can be very easily misunderstood is the drawing of the second floor, which looks like the terrace is twice as big as is proposed. As I understand it, there's a flat roof, and only half of that is going to be partitioned off as a terrace.
Correct, yeah.
And therefore, there's that large space between the, um, derailing, I would say, and the edge of the roof, so, and I don't think that's really clear from the drawing. Something maybe the applicant could clarify, because there's only a, a, basically a railing that's separating the spec- the portion of the roof that's going to be used as a terrace, and the portion that's going to remain just as a roof, so the terrace is actually smaller than this drawing tends to suggest.
It does, yeah. I did notice that. There's a nice fat line halfway through that terrace.
And that's the railing, I believe.
Yeah, it's a railing. You'll notice, uh, also that area is three-point-nine square meters, just, just shy of the four-square-meter.
And, and the other question I had was, was also related to a drawing. In, in the planning department report, they indicate that the, um, modified east yard setback is in fact larger than the setback of the existing car part, carport. And yet, the drawings that we have before us don't seem to, don't seem to reflect that. The carport looks to have a bigger setback than the garage, and maybe the applicant could clarify that as well. If you look at the drawing, um, let me see which one is. There is a, um, hold on one second. SP one-point-one. And then, SP one-point-two shows the existing carport. The carport appears to have a bigger setback than the proposed garage, so maybe he could clarify that as well, because there was, there was an objection about the side yard setback, I believe, in our material from some, one of the residents.
Yeah, just, I'm, uh, looking between SP one-point-one versus one-point-two, and I do see existing, oh, they are both existing. Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Drawn, they've got new garage written over the top, so it isn't clear. Anyway, the, just a couple of clarifications that might, uh, impact upon what the neighbors have, are, are commenting upon.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Nipphil. Any other questions before I turn it back to the agent for response? Okay, let's go back to our agent.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you. Um, I can speak to the carport, which, which just mentioned. That was an existing carport that came down, and the setback was a little larger. The drawings that were created, uh, in order to conform to the minimum required for a garage is now set in place at the measurements that are drawn. Um, so I'm not so sure that the attached garage outline on the drawing is accurate, because that carport was really close to where the, um, future proposed garage will be, so, um, that's the, the answer to that, uh, item there. Um, but it, this property did have a carport, and we want to now build a garage on the property, as recommended by staff to increase the setback a little larger than was proposed. As relates to the balcony, we will, we will comply with the requirements of zoning and code. I don't believe that this application considers variance for the balcony.
Alright.
Thank you. If, I, I'll answer any other questions if necessary.
Uh, I should ask, uh, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked your neighbor about, uh, potential privacy screening. Um, if, if it does come up for discussion, uh, is there a preference, is there, or is it something that you feel that can be worked on, uh, with the neighbor?
So I can absolutely work with the neighbors through the owner regarding balcony, sensing, I can, I can, our intention is to comply and to be collaborative in every nature possible here.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, alright, let's take this into committee. Uh, just briefly, uh, Mr. Nipphil, just to your comment about the balcony, I, I know it came up twice that, uh, there's no variance specifically related to the balcony, but I might argue that you have a west side yard setback variance, and if you're allowing the entire building to move closer towards the neighbor, then, uh, there is, I, I, I mean, there is argument, I think, uh, that there may be some impact, uh, from now that balcony being able to move closer, depending how they ever, wh- where they wish to put the guard. Um, but to your submission about the fact that the size of that, I mean, it's deceiving, but the size is mitigated by the fact that it can only go to four-meter square, if they do put a privacy screen in, or if they do put a railing in that's not necessarily privacy screened. The fact that there's step back from the edge of the building in itself helps to mitigate some of the onsite and overlook, so I've, I've, uh.
Agreed.
I have less concern in that, in that regard. Um, in terms of the other variances, uh, I don't, I don't really, uh, have too much, uh, concern with this one. The only thing that I do, uh, a little bit hung up on, uh, with respect to the first variance for the east side yard setback, um, it would have been nice to get an updated site plan, because, uh, I would have liked to tie that variance to the site plan, just to ensure that the variance is only permitted to accommodate the, uh, extension of the house to, uh, for the garage, for the car, and that that variance wouldn't be, uh, permitted to extend, uh, all the way to the rear main wall. But I don't know if there's a way to, uh, control that approval. Uh, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Through you, Mr. J. I really agree. I think I was looking, uh, to see a revised site plan with that setback, because if we allow that variance, it could be, like, extended to the back wall.
Correct, yeah.
So, but I can't see any revised, uh, floor plan or site plan of the file, so probably the applicant can clarify that.
Uh, or, uh, to clarify whether or not there's an updated site plan? I don't think there is.
No.
No. And I wonder if the variance can be... I, I'm looking for like a depth variance on that, uh, sorry, not depth variance, but a depth, uh, measurement on that garage, to see, you know, perhaps if that variance could be tied to terminate at a certain point.
Just for the garage portion of the.
For the garage portion, yeah, but then that's not to say that you couldn't extend the garage through a revised plan and extend the garage all the way back, right?
I think it needs to be ti- I agree with you, by the way. I, I think it does need to be tied to a site plan. We don't have one. Um, and I think leaving it not tied to a site plan, um, raises the concern that both of you raised, that basically it could extend back, and it really, one would argue, it's not what we have, what we think we have in front of us. I think we need a site plan.
Yeah. I would agree.
Because in the same way, I, I, approval of this application, in my view, needs to say that the second floor, um, balcony or deck is to be, um, constructed or, or developed in accordance with the second floor plan, because I want to clarify that it's only half of the roof. Because the concern that we've had about screening, I agree that screening in this case is probably not necessary, but that's in large part due to the fact that only half of that roof is going to be used for a deck.
Yeah.
That's, I think, should be tied to a drawing, but here, we have a drawing. We don't have a site plan. If you use drawing A one-point-four, which shows the length of the garage, would that satisfy your concern? It's a floor plan, but in effect, but it does have the dimension.
Yes, it does, thank you. Uh, yeah, eight-point-eight-six meters, uh, from the front main wall. So, I think we can word something in. And, uh, to, uh, Mr. Nipphil's point about the, uh, we, I think we can tie the, uh, other side yard setback to the plan, uh, with your submission, to your submission about the, uh, screening.
Yeah.
For the size of the platform, I should say. Anybody want to take a stab at wording? I mean, with respect to the, uh, side yard setback variance, uh, you, you could say it, it shall only pertain to the, uh, garage.
As shown.
Uh, as shown on the, or, or as, perhaps indicate, perhaps, um, it shall pertain to the depth of the garage, uh, as indicated on drawing eight-point-one, one-point-four. You could even say eight-point-eight-six meters. At that. Yes, Mr. Deputy Secretary-Treasurer?
Just, uh, quick note, if you're gonna use that method, which is great, just, you have to keep in mind, does it extend if there is a second floor above? So you'd have to specify what the length or the depth, and then the floor level.
It's just, it's just one floor.
Because if you just, if you leave it at the, sort of the garage length, there's nothing to prevent them from building up.
Right. Oh, that is correct, yes, yes. And it is a one-story, uh, side addition.
Could you tie it to the elevation as well? Because that shows that it's only one story.
Yeah.
You can also say it as it pertains to the garage depth on the ground floor and no higher.
And no higher. That's exactly what I was looking for. So if we wanna, we got two kind of methods, two approaches. It's your mic. Mr. Bertol.
I, I'm happy to make a motion and, and tie the dimensions appropriately to the garage, but I'm not exactly tracking on the language you're looking for for the balcony. Because it's, it's not a variance, and I know there's some conversation and concern about it, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, if it's an as of right, what's the point in tying the drawings? Because they're limited by the four-square-meters.
Because if they use the whole second, if they use the entire roof as the terrace, then they, they need a variance that they won't have. I, what we have before us is a ver- is, is a balcony that complies to the bylaw. And to show that, I think the, the second floor plan is clear. Right, and the, the building inspector will enforce this and not allow them to build larger than what they're supposed to. You think? Well, that's how it's supposed to work. Yes, that's how it's supposed to work. I, I would still feel better if it was tied to the plan.
And given that we have the neighbor listening in, at number five, they're the ones that are impacted, the only ones that are impacted, I should say. Uh, if they're listening in, they understand that, uh, that guard is only supposed to be, right now, as indicated on the drawing, it's halfway, it's only allowing for use of half of that flat roof space, uh, if they do decide to build the guard not in accordance, and neither the building inspector will catch it, or if it is, becomes a concern, then the neighbor knows that they can put in a call to the Toronto Building and, uh, have that looked at. I don't, I don't know if that is, uh, helps to assage some of your concerns.
I still would like to tie it to, I don't see the, I don't see the problem in tying it to a plan or to the elevation. They.
Is it the guards on the elevation as well?
The applicant's clearly indicated what his intention is. Pardon me?
Yes, I think, um, I, I understand the, the point that you, my colleagues are sharing. Um, um, I mean, we could make a motion for that. My opinion, just because of the variance itself is not there for the technicality of just because we don't have that there, um, I'm thinking of it, but at the same time, I understand your concerns and what, um, what is the point in here, so I, I do understand that.
But it's not my motion, he's making a motion.
Alright, let's do it.
Alright, let's try one.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you, I will put forward a motion to approve this application, subject to the following conditions. The variance one be modified from, uh, decimal four-three meters to decimal five-eight meters, and that the setback, um, on the...
You said decimal four-three, right?
From four-three to five-eight.
Yes, oh, yes, it's a five-eight, yeah.
And, uh, that the setback on the east side, as it pertains to the garage, shall be for the length of the garage, uh, as noted on drawing, uh, A one-point-four. It's, uh, eight decimal eight-six meters, and, uh, shall only be for the first story of the garage.
It's the east side, yeah.
And that's it?
That's it?
That's it.
Alright, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Marziani. All in favor? Yeah? Uh, let's just confirm. Yeah, east side.
It's the variance on the east side, yeah. Varyance one.
Varyance one. Yeah, and I think we're okay with the other vi- we don't need any, uh, we're not gonna attach drawings to, at least for the sake of this motion. Okay, uh, so we've got our motion, uh, seconded by Mr. Marziani, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Nipphil opposed? Okay, that application is approved. Uh, alright, uh, members, staff, how are we doing? Uh, do we need a, a short relief break at this time? Five minutes? Okay, let's take five. Uh, we'll resume at eleven-seventeen, uh, AM. Five minutes, okay, let's take five, we'll resume at eleven seventeen AM. All right, time is now eleven eighteen, we are back, we are on item number five. Oh, sorry. Okay, the time is now eleven eighteen, we are back. We are on item number five, three oh nine Rosewell Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing dwelling to construct a new addition. Interior alterations on all floors, new front exterior stair, a new lower rear patio and a rear deck. We've got two variances required to facilitate this, building length and FSI. On file, material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry and letter of support from three one one Rosewell Avenue. All right, we got our agent or applicant with us?
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Armstrong. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can, could you give us your address?
Okay, yes, of course, my address is five eight four Jones. I'm an architect with Amp Studio and I am speaking on behalf of the owners who reside, who reside at three oh nine Rosewell Avenue.
Okay, can I, can I also confirm Ms. Lena Ma is in your party?
Yes, Lena Ma is in our party, I will be speaking on behalf of the owner.
Okay, very good, and then I've also got another speaker on my list, Dario Luna Pla. Is it that person?
Dario Luna. Oh, yes, that, that is the owner.
Okay, so you, you'll be the only representative for this file then today, speaking on?
That's correct.
For the application, okay, very good. Give us a moment here.
Great.
Before we get going, I'm just gonna ask my colleagues whether they have any questions. No, I'm also gonna ask whether or not they would like a presentation on this item. Okay, so I, I don't think, we've reviewed the application file, we don't have any other speakers in objection. If there's anything you'd like to add, you may, although it looks like I can head right into committee for decision for you.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you, committee chair and members. I just want to briefly state that we had also submitted a cover letter dated April twenty four, twenty twenty five with a brief planning rationale around the, the minor variances, if that's a helpful reference as you consider the request for this proposal. There's clear precedent in the neighborhood for an FSI request at this size or greater in the immediate neighborhood and the building length is generated from the existing footprint of the existing residents, if that's at all helpful as you make your decision and consider our requests.
Yes, thank you, and I, I will acknowledge we did receive the cover letter with associated planning rationale, so thank you for that. All right, let's take this into committee now. Just a few brief comments to get us started. I don't have any concerns with this particular file, I, I think there's a good use of angular planes that are used to help mitigate the massing and, and allowing the, the overall form to work well within its context. I do note that there is a standard urban forestry conditions, but I'll, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, do you have any comment at this time? Nope.
Oh, pardon me, okay, sorry. Okay, thanks.
All right. Maybe a motion? Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to move approval of the application with only one condition, and that's forestry condition one and two. I don't see any difficulties with this application at all, as you indicated, there, there's very good use of planes and there is an endorsement from the owner, immediate owner at three eleven. I just don't see there being any difficulties and the variances are relatively minor, so I'd like to move approval subject to forestry condition one and two.
All right, do I have a seconder? Yeah, Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, that is approved. All right, moving along. We're on item number six, eighty Sultana Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling. Five variances up before us, including platform encroachment into a front yard setback. Building height, front yard setback, lot coverage and one variance to permit a parking space in a front yard. On file, material from the applicant, memo from transportation, form letters of support from number seventy three, seventy eight, eighty one and eighty two Sultana Avenue. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Applicant for the owner.
Sorry, your name?
Joseph Cohen, Sixth Delia Court, applicant, agent for the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, can I also confirm Ms. Dundas, she won't, will or will not be presenting with you?
I don't have Ms. Dundas with me, I don't know if that's a different neighbor in the neighborhood.
Okay, I have her listed as a agent, new agent, but maybe we'll get staff just to confirm that information for us. Do we have that person online? No? Okay. Oh, is Mr. and Ms. Dundas here in the gallery? No? Okay, that may, that may have been misplaced. Okay. All right, well, if they, there's no one here to speak to it, there's no one here to speak to it. Okay, let's go back to Mr. Cohen. Just give us a moment here.
Sure.
All right, sir, it looks like you're the only speaker, I'm gonna ask for a brief presentation from you, staff will get the five minutes up. And I believe there's some comments from transportation as well, if you can, if you'd like to address, I believe they're requesting deferral. They want some clarification on the front yard parking space, all right?
Yes.
All right.
Hi, okay, thank you, committee, oh, thank you, thank you, committee chair and committee members for your time and hearing this today. I will talk to the memo on transportation, but first I'll just go through the variances. There are precedents in the area, as you can see for the platform, there's another, there's another one forty one Sultana. Was very similar and approved, some other variances that set precedent in the area as well was building height, reduced front yard setback and increased lot coverage. The fifth item regarding the parking space, there are precedents in the area for front yard parking in adjacent properties nearby, it was with the cover letter given in as well, I think it's one of the earlier pages, yeah, over there, thank you, Chair. In regards to the transportation, I did reach out to them once I received the memo just to get clarification, because it's a multi-residential, it's a fourplex. I was explaining to them that a parking spot is actually not required, a legalized parking spot is not required from my understanding. So I wanted to see how that affected what they were saying. They were able to email me back, after talking to them over the phone, they were able to email back yesterday late in the day. I have a copy of the email, but unfortunately I wasn't able to upload it to the portal for you guys to see. But in there, I could just repeat what they, what they said, if that's needed. But they're pretty much saying the ultimate decision is made up by the committee of adjustments and a legalized parking spot must meet a certain type of size. But I could definitely talk to transportation and any questions that you guys have on it as well. From my understanding, like I said, a legalized spot, I believe is not required for, for this application.
But your, but my understanding is you are applying for it, right?
I, I, I'm applying for keeping the driveway, so I believe the driveway is what's, what kind of triggering why the, the ZAF review brought it up as a variance.
Right, but in order for you to have a driveway, you need to have, that driveway needs to access a place for that vehicle to park. So you need a parking space, you need a parking pad, you need access to a rear yard where there is either parking or you need a opening in your front main wall as a garage door in order to accommodate a driveway. You can't just have a driveway and say, well, we don't have, the driveway doesn't serve anything. So actually, let's just pull up the site plan, I'm gonna ask on the site plan, I believe there's a certain requirement for parking, and if I look at the transportation report, they're looking at a length of, I believe, five point six meters and a width of two point six meters, so I, if I pull up the site plan, perhaps you can indicate for us where that proposed parking space is. I presume in front of the porch.
So, just to speak, yes, you got it. So if, if that parking spot would be required there, the, the spot would actually be encroaching past the property line. The owners were looking for, because it's a fourplex, the owners were looking for an area that they could use for areas for their own use to play, as well as the tenants wanted a hard surface to play. So the driveway at the front was going to be used for a play area, basketball, things like that. So they weren't thinking about it as parking. But to answer your question, yes, if a party, if there's a driveway, then there has to be a spot. The owners were looking at, well, can we just keep the driveway and use it as a play area? I could, but I spoke with the owners on this briefly. I one hundred percent could modify the porch to accommodate the five point six requirement.
Let's just, I think there's a bit of confusion here, if you would like to hardscape an area in the front yard for recreational use, it's not a parking spot and it's not a driveway, it's just hardscaping. Right, in which case you need to tell us that's what you're applying for, you may or may not have a variance for soft landscaping in your front yard, right? But what you're asking for, when you're asking for a parking spot, you're also asking, in addition to that area being hardscaped, you're asking for permission to leave a vehicle on that space and that's what we're evaluating today. So there's also a curb cut that's associated, right, you understand? So, um, I, I think, maybe I'll turn it over, I think, my, my colleague, Mr. Niffel, did you, you had a question?
Well, my, my question was, when I reviewed this at home as, as well as today, I had no idea where the parking was going to go and then the transportation memo came in that basically said they needed to know exactly what the dimensions were. I, I, I don't think we can just approve it without having those, that information. It doesn't appear that certainly with the floor plan and the, the building envelope that you've got, that you can actually get a legal parking space in the front yard. It looks as though if you, it sounds as though you need to be clearer about whether or not you want a parking space or not. If you do, it needs to work, if it isn't, as the chairman indicated, you then don't need a, you don't need a curb cut and you have to make sure that you clarify what this surface is that you're, that you're proposing to play on. I would argue that if it's a recreational use, that it's, it's, it needs to be something more than asphalt. I, I don't think it's clear what it is you want, you can't have an approval for a whole bunch of options, you have to choose one.
Okay, so I could meet the accommodations, I could meet the requirements for our parking spots with the modification of the front porch the five point six meters can't fit with how the front porch is now. So, I don't, if the parking is what's a variance that can't be given because it's, it doesn't fit, the parking I could modify to make it fit, so that variance wouldn't be, wouldn't be needed anymore.
Okay.
If we go back to the site plan.
So you'd still need a vari, sorry, I, maybe I wasn't clear, you'd still need a variance to park in the front yard. The point is, the parking space will have to be a certain size. What you've asked for is the ability to park in the front yard, that's a variance. We have to decide on that today if this is going forward, it doesn't look like you can make it work with this building envelope. And I don't think you can change, you, you can't change the building here at the meeting, so it's, it's not clear. It seems to me if, if you want to proceed without the front yard parking, we can deal with it, but I don't, if you still want front yard parking, you're gonna have to make some revisions.
Okay, so then we could, let's, the, can we go back to the site plan?
Yep, staff, we've got the site planned up.
Oh, oh, perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so if we could proceed with saying that it would, um, applying for without the parking.
You'd like to eliminate, uh, one of the variances, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, we'll be eliminating variance number three, five? Five. All right. Is this to confirm, uh, you'd like to remove variance number five, sir? Um, I should also note, um, right, before we get any further on this, I, I just wanna make sure that the agent understands that we also have the option of deferring this so that you can have some discussions with transportation, try to get your application, uh, amended to address some of the concerns and come back to us. Uh, or, uh, alternatively, uh, as my colleague suggested, we could, uh, just deal with the variances that we can deal with today.
Um, if you could deal with the variances that you can deal with today, is that alternatively, and I could still do a, uh, reach out to transportation on the one variance that we were questioning, which is the parking, or does it have to be all deferred?
Nope, you could, well, no, it would all be deferred, but if we do deal, if we do push this forward today, uh, and you do want that variance, you would have to file a new application. Be a brand-new application, so you'd have a decision and then you'd have, sorry?
Sorry, so I, 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 I'm thank you for the clarification. If so, if I defer, it wouldn't be a new application. It would just be deferring this so I could, uh, accommodate transportation and then come back to speak to the matter.
Correct, yeah. You have the benefit too of understanding some of the concerns that you've heard, not only through transportation, but through our committee. You've brought some issues up that you may want to, uh, attend to. But it is your choice. You are, uh, in the driver's seat, okay?
Now, I will definitely defer, uh, based on that information.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, let's take this into committee. I, Mr. Bartolo, I, I'll give you the floor. I just wanna make just a few comments, just to try to help this, because we've reviewed this file. I know we've talked a lot about the front yard, uh, parking pad, transportation. I had some concerns with respect to the front yard setback on this. Uh, I'm not gonna get into too much planning rationale, but it, it, uh, I mean, you just take a hard look at the immediate context, uh, particularly the setbacks on the houses across the street, that setbacks on the houses that are directly adjacent, um, so that, I, I just wanna put that out there as a courtesy, maybe that's something the, the applicant's listening, um, but maybe they may or may not wanna look at that. Uh, that said, I'll, I'll turn it over, Mr. Bartolo, uh, comments or motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you, I'm gonna put forward a motion to defer this application to the out, allow the applicant to, uh, coordinate with Transportation Services and, uh, make the amendments as necessary.
Okay, second by Mr. Fazeli, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Uh, the application is deferred. All right. We're on to item number seven, thirty-two Old Orchard Grove. The purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling. Variances for FSI, front yard setback, west side yard setback, and access to vehicular parking from a main street. On file, material from the applicant and a memo from Urban Forestry. Give our agent or applicant with us.
My name's Erica Berksma.
All right. Welcome, and your address?
Um, six St. Alph.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, you just, uh, there was a previous approval back in nineteen for this. I just wanna confirm, uh, the previous agent's no longer involved with this project?
Uh, correct.
All right.
His new agent.
Just wanted to confirm conflict, potential conflict there, but there is none. Um, I'll ask my colleagues whether or not they, uh, have any questions or if they require a presentation on this item. Guys, give me a moment. All right. All right, doesn't appear we need a presentation from you today, uh, and we don't have any questions. Uh, so if there's anything else you'd like to add, please do so, otherwise I can take this into committee.
Uh, yeah, you can just go ahead into committee.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's take this matter into committee. Sure, Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, in reviewing this application, um, I see some of the numerical differences here. Uh, given the nature and shape of the lot, I think it's appropriate, it's, it's not typical. I don't think it's gonna have a adverse effect on the community, and it meets the four tests, so therefore I'll put forward a motion to approve this application. Subject to the conditions of the Urban Forestry memo attached.
All right, do I have a second, or second by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, you have your approv- approval. Okay, item number eight, twenty-four fifty Victoria Park Avenue. The purpose of this application is to permit a commercial school within the existing seven-story office building. One variance related to use, uh, as noted in the purpose. On file, we've got material from the applicant. Give our applicant or agent with us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, members of the committee. My name is, uh, Clay Jansen. I'm the planning consultant representing the owners of tenants of the, the site you're, um, looking at right now. My address is two zero nine eight Avenue Road.
All right. Uh, I just wanna confirm, we don't have any, uh, correspondence from staff on this, nothing in the late file? No, okay, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions or if they would like a few words, presentation. I'd say it's a bit unusual. Maybe a few words, uh, let's, uh, it, it doesn't appear through, uh, staff communications, uh, that there's, uh, anybody or, or neighbor, uh, submission that there's anyone objecting to this. Uh, but, uh, perhaps a few, uh, words, uh, just giving us a little bit, uh, more information about, uh, the application before us.
Yes, of course, and I'll, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I think it is quite straightforward, but if you have any other questions, I can elaborate on the, the context or, or what we're asking for. So, we're requesting a minor variance to permit a commercial school within the existing, uh, seven-story building located at the southwest corner of, uh, Consumers and Victoria Park. There's no built form changes which are being requested, so it's staying as is. Um, just by way of background, the property was rezoned in twenty twenty-two to allow for a mixed-use community through, uh, four, uh, tall, uh, sorry, three tall buildings and one mid-rise building. Um, as part of that application, an official plan amendment was also approved, designating the land's mixed-use areas. Um, while the site-specific bylaw at the time, um, in, uh, one two four nine dash twenty twenty-two, which is submitted with the materials, it doesn't list commercial school as a permitted use. However, the parent zoning bylaw, the North York zoning bylaw seven six two five, um, does permit this use. And that's for a C one zone, which what, which is what this was, uh, permitted, um, and approved for at the time. Functionally, in my opinion, a commercial school operates very similarly to any of the other permitted uses and doesn't change or alter the, the character or function of the sites, you know, and, and the area. We did reach out to community planning, they did confirm, uh, that they were not gonna submit, uh, any comments or report on this application, nor did any other, uh, staff or agency. Um, in my opinion, the variance is, it's very minor, it's desirable, it's technical in nature, and, and it also maintains the intent of the mixed-use designation, which exists on the lot, and also the zoning bylaw, um, which is zone C one, where a commercial school i- is permitted. The function of it is really just so, um, some, some, some space in this existing building can be used and tenanted, uh, to kind of, uh, uh, further, further the, uh, the, the building and, and hopefully it pr- provides some employment and, and, uh, school uses.
All right, very well. Is that helpful? Yeah? It seems like they've, if I understand correctly, they had the use, they had a site-specific bylaw for master plan, and then they've got some interim plans, I guess, now, and they need to go back to the original, so. Um, all right. All right, let's take this into committee? Uh, yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move approval of this application to the conditions. I think it's straightforward. Um, and as you indicated, the, um, original bylaw actually, uh, included issues. The uses that are included in the specific apply, applicable bylaw are very similar and compatible. I don't see that there be, there being any conflict at all in, in this particular application, and I do believe that it maintains the intent and purpose of the official plan and bylaws.
All right. We'll have a second, or? Yes, uh, second by Mr. Masiari, all in favor. That's unanimous, that is approved. All right, we are on to item number nine. Um, I've been told that, uh, we are uh, just waiting on Mr. Braunskill, so, uh, I do apologize, I know there's some, there are some people, uh, waiting on this file. Uh, I am gonna stand it down, uh, and, uh, we're gonna deal with number ten first, uh, and then we will, uh, come back to item number nine. Okay, uh, item number ten, thirty-two Larrabee Crescent. This is an application uh, to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with an integrated garage, a front porch, a rear deck, and a rear basement walkout. We've got a number of variances, uh, for this file, including main wall height, front entrance height, number of stories, lot coverage, north and south side yard setbacks, rear yard setback of a platform, and platform projection as it relates to height. On file, material from the applicant, a memo from Urban Forestry, and one letter of concern from number sixty-eight Larrabee Crescent. All right, we have our agent with us. Hello? 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 Now we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you now.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. This is Frost Puyende, uh, address is one of five Harrison Garden Boulevard, unit five fifteen.
All right, sir, uh, gonna ask for a presentation. Uh, staff have got five minutes up, uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you know, uh, I upload, I asked for the, uh, this is a waiver. I, uh, I had a conversation with the, um, planning department, and I, for, for the first, uh, zoning, i- i- if you open the zoning notice, you can see, uh, I did reduce some, uh, variances. For example, uh, the lot coverage, it was thirty-two and point four.
Stop him for a sec. Sorry, Mr. Chair, we could remind him, if he's making changes, he needs to itemize them for us.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, Deputy Secretary Treasury is correct. Uh, sir, you are making some modifications, uh, believe?
Uh, no, uh, no, no, no. I did it before, uh, you know, standing the public hearing. If, if it is possible to open the, uh, waiver, I uploaded, it is on the supporting documents. Um, you can see, and this is the, uh, these, uh, variances you, you see, this is the, the one that after, uh, revision, it is okay, I'm okay with all of them.
Okay, let me ask you this. Uh, forget the waiver, I would like to look at the public hearing notice that was mailed out. Uh, are there any changes to the variances that are noted on the public hearing notice?
Uh, no, no changes to this public hearing.
Okay, so that is correct and all up to date?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, please continue.
Uh, sure, uh, let me bring, okay. Uh, the variances, uh, I, we requested, the first one is the building height. Uh, it was, uh, eight, uh, point thirty, uh, but, uh, you know, uh, I had a conversation with the, uh, planning de- department. We reduced it to eight fifteen to receive, you know, some, some sort of, uh, satisfaction with this. Uh, the other one, this is the, uh, four-year main entrance, uh, it is, uh, you, it is, uh, very common. We asked, it is, uh, one point two meter, we asked for one point forty-one meter. It is, uh, eight inches above the bylaw. Uh, it is common in this area. Regarding the, uh, item number three, the number of a story, this is because of the, if it's possible to, uh, bring up that, um, section, it is because of the, the middle of the ceiling in the basement area. It makes the, based on the new bylaw, it makes it like a three-story, but it is a two-story. And this, uh, satisfied, uh, old bylaw of the North York. If, yes, the other one. I think it's the last, um, uh, yes, this one. Uh, we are, uh, a couple of centimeter above the established grade, and because of that, this building is a three-story, uh, it is a two-story. And this is a very minor variance in, technically. Uh, for setbacks, we requested for, in this area, the se- site setbacks are, uh, six feet. We asked for five feet, both, either side, both sides. And, uh, this is common, there are some similar project has, uh, you know, had, we got approval from Committee Adjustment, uh, for this, uh, uh, variance. And, uh, item number seven, uh, it is regarding the setback for the, uh, the, the deck. If it's possible, uh, show, uh, site plan. Uh, I can explain, uh, the site plan. Yes, this one. You know, there, there is a, there is an existing pool over there. Uh, the deck, the proposed deck, if it's possible, um, make it, you know, bigger. Um, there is an existing pool, uh, the pool gonna remain, and the deck above that one is flush with the side of the pool. So, and this variance, uh, is because of that. If we don't have this variance, it, you know, based on the bylaw, it is, uh, rear yard, it's like six point one meter. This one meter gonna be useless between the, uh, deck and the, uh, the lower deck and the pool. And, uh, because of that, we are asking for this one. And number, uh, eight, number eight, uh, if it's possible, um, show, uh, rear elevation. Yes, this one. The lower deck is one point, uh, you know, the, the elevation over there, it shows the grade is the, um, is the pool, uh, grade. And, uh, this is one point, uh, i- i- based on the bylaw, it is one point two meter for the lower deck. And we request for eight inches or nine inches above that one, and this variance is because of that. If it was one point two meter, no variance is requested, but this is because of that. We, we are requesting for this couple of inches here, uh, for the lower deck. And item number, uh, yeah, that's all.
Right.
There is another one, yeah.
Just final words? Just at our five-minute mark there?
Yeah, uh, it's done, almost done, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, we also have, uh, two other speakers, or one other speaker, I should say, uh, from number sixty-eight Larrabee Crescent. Which I believe is one of your immediate neighbors. At the rear.
To you, Mr. Chair. We are, we sent request to unmute for Lina Bobby. She needs to accept it. Mr. or Mrs. Bobby, if you can hear us, please unmute yourself.
Hello? Not unmuted? All right. You've got yourself muted. Mr. and Mrs. Crowe? Oh, I apologize. Mr. Bobby. To, to our registered speaker at sixty-eight Larrabee, can you please log off and log back on again? And if we send you a request to unmute yourself, please acknowledge that. Thank you. The next one? Or the previous one? Okay. I would. Mr. Chair? Yes. Why don't we stand this item down? We can move on to number nine. The agent is online now. We'll continue to see if all right. Jay Bobby logs on, and we're reaching out with the phone number given, but we're receiving a voice message. So why don't we go to item number nine? All right, being generous. Well, all right, let's stand it down. If the neighbor's not, we can't get a hold of them when they get back. We're just going to have to move on. Okay, item number nine. So we're standing down item number 10. We're going to jump back to item number nine. Thirty Glen Allen Road. The purpose of this application. Oh, yes, we do have a conflict on. Mr. Bartolo is going to step out. Actually, before you do, can you please state the reason for your conflict?
I'm working on, with Mr. Bronskill. He's an agent on a common client file on a different project in the city.
Okay. Thank you for stepping out, Mr. Bartolo. All right, so item number nine, thirty Glen Allen Road. The purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with an attached garage. Variances for front yard setback, main wall height related to dormers, building height, lot coverage, main wall height, building length, building depth, and number of stories. On file, material from the applicant, report from community planning, memo from urban forestry, letter of support from number eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six, and forty Glen Allen Road, as well as two thirty-five, two sixty-one, and two sixty-three Dollish Avenue, number thirty-seven, number forty-seven Daneswood Road, number one twenty-one Stratford Crescent, number fourteen Stratheden, number one twenty-three Rochester Avenue. And in addition to those letters of support, we have some letters of objection from two sixty-five, two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight, two seventy-one, and two seventy-four Dollish Avenue. All right, we've got our agent with us, Mr. Bronskill, available?
Mr. Chair?
Good morning, Mr. Bronskill.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you now.
Thank you.
Your address?
The last name's Bronskill.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry, sir. Last name's Bronskill. First initial D for David, three-three-three Bay Street, Suite 3400. Here as agent for the applicant, and thank you for the indulgence, Mr. Chair. I just had a personal matter that erupted this morning, and so I appreciate the indulgence of the committee.
No problem. All right, sir, going to ask for a presentation from you. We'll get the five minutes up, and I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will go through the I will go through the presentation materials, Mr. Chair, that we did file with you, because I think they do go through the different variances. I will note, Mr. Chair, on the first page, I should just highlight for you, if you see there in blue on the right-hand side, there is an adjustment on the plans in terms of the coverage having been reduced from forty point three-three percent. This is variance number four, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
It's a modest adjustment that has it at thirty-nine point four-seven percent.
Okay, so we're going to be modifying variance number four on the public notice from forty point three-three to thirty-nine point four-seven, and that pertains to lot coverage.
Yes, please, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. The next pages of the presentations, Mr. Chair, just go through the design. The second page after the stats, that's the page there. Thank you, staff. It's a bit complicated, Mr. Chair. I just want to highlight a few things for the panel. The first in green is the existing house, and you can see where it sits in accordance with the front yard setback, side yard setbacks, and at the rear, a bit of a stagger where it does have a rounded window at the back that would exceed the building envelope at the back. In red, Mr. Chair, we've put in what would be the permitted building envelope. That includes side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, and the permitted one-story extension, and we've also flagged the minimum rear yard setback at the rear. The next page, Mr. Chair, I think is helpful. It simplifies things a little bit for you to understand how the proposed dwelling fits in terms of that envelope, and also how it relates to its neighbors. And I'm just going to highlight a few things on that page for you, Mr. Chair. The front yard setback at seven point two is just to the bump out or architectural element. The main wall, in fact, otherwise meets the setback and is in line with the adjacent property. You can see how the main structure, the two stories, Mr. Chair, meets the, otherwise meets the envelope in terms of the side yard setbacks and where the rear wall is supposed to be located. There is then the bump out for the first story and the covered outdoor room. You can see, Mr. Chair, on that diagram, we've also highlighted for you the different dimensions, so you can understand how the building tiers up through the different stories. The ground floor at twenty-two point eight-one in terms of its length, measured from that front bump out. The second floor comes down, it's only seventeen point four-five, and then the third story, which is actually within the roof line, is twelve point twelve, twelve point two-eight meters, Mr. Chair, so it is staggering as it comes back. What the design also does, I'll just flag you on that page, Mr. Chair, is you can see how that outdoor covered room in first story basically line up with, again, that adjacent dwelling, so as to ensure compatibility as new homes occur within the area. In terms of the numbers, Mr. Chair, because I know we look at the quantitative and qualitative, we've got some pages that follow just to show you coverages, lengths, heights, depths that have occurred or been approved in the neighborhood. In terms of time, Mr. Chair, I'm going to quickly go to page eight to just show you the height and why I suggest you. It's pretty technical in terms of what's being suggested, both in terms of overall height and wall height. You can see, it's really just as the roof, in terms of that slope of roof, it's point eight-one of a meter. That's all that's exceeding. It's that small portion, Mr. Chair, and the wall height similarly is really a modest increase just to the top of the second floor before that third floor then occurs. In terms of the length depth, Mr. Chair, we've worked with planning staff. You can see, Mr. Chair, they're otherwise supportive, but have asked for a condition relating to the length and maximum being tied to the site plan and elevations to ensure that what we're proposing is actually what occurs, and we are accepting of that, Mr. Chair, because it will stop any type of redeployment of massing in a way different than what's shown on the site plan, and we're supportive of that. And, Mr. Chair, we've also shown a privacy fence on the third floor that's under the roof. The last thing I would just say, Mr. Chair, is page twelve shows you the rendering, and it indicated to you that that third story is within the roof. Mr. Chair, if ultimately that third story was not approved, and we do have instances of three-story houses within the neighborhood, the actual build form wouldn't change. You would still have the dormers. You just wouldn't have GFA behind them. And so, Mr. Chair, that's an explanation of the variances, and we hope we could have your support subject to the condition of planning.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Questions? All right. Okay, we have some other speakers I'd like to get to at this time. Anybody here to speak to this today? Yes, please come on down. Whoever would like to present first, and make sure the mic's on. Give us your full name and address to start.
Hello? Good morning. My name is Claudia Sabatini-Meeh. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I, and my address is two sixty-five Dollish Avenue. I'm directly behind the property. I have concerns about the third floor and the overall height of the new build, along with the depth on the first floor as it is set closer to my home. My major concern is essentially the privacy and the safety for my girls. As a parent, my priority has always been and always will be my children, and I want, they're my world. And I want to feel at ease when they're in the yard, by the pool, and furthermore, given my home's first and second floor are also on, in the house itself, because it is, it has windows throughout. So that would mean that they would be seen day and night, including when they're in their pajamas. We have, since until now, with their current size of home that's there, we've tried to ensure privacy by growing and maintaining fast-growing dense evergreens, white cedars to be specific, that retain their greenery throughout the year unlike deciduous sleet trees. We enjoy the same type of trees that was there and is currently on some of their property. However, in the plans, I don't see them.
Hi, my name is Doug Meeh. I'm Claudia's husband. I also reside at two sixty-five Dollish. And let me just first start off by saying thank you very much for giving the opportunity to chat today. And listen, we do like the design of this house. It's beautiful. It sits, suits the neighborhood, but we are going to oppose this new build simply because of the privacy concerns that we have. When you do look at the various components on that third floor, you have a whole deck out there with room for chairs and a table. In the design we were provided, there is no privacy screen or anything like that, but we continue to be very concerned about that, especially given the lot sizes on Glen Allen. They're much shorter than on Dollish. They're around a hundred thirty-five feet, and so they'll be looking essentially down into our backyard, and even from their second floor into our pool area, where we spend a lot of time in the summer. On top of that, I'd say that, you know, when you look at the number of houses that are along Glen Allen, I'd fully expect that most of these will go three-story as well, if you go ahead and approve this. Now, they have adjusted, I guess, the square footage to a degree, but they're still asking for around forty percent. The one thing I'd add here is that when you think about a third story on a house, you're, this is not a minor variance, the way I see it. You're increasing, they're asking for a fifteen percent variance in terms of coverage on the space, but then if you include that, the actual size of the third floor, it's closer to a fifty percent variance relative to that three hundred two square meters that is allowed for this space. So we're a little concerned about that. The one thing I will also highlight is that our neighbors at two sixty-seven, they highlighted in their letter that there are our neighbors at 267, they highlighted in their letter that there are a number of trees in their back corner that are not in the arborist report, that it looks like they plan to take down as well. And we're concerned about that because they provide privacy right now, not just from thirty Glen Allen, but from twenty-eight, that's also a new build right now, that has glass across its whole back windows. And so, at the end of the day, we're very concerned about privacy, and a third story on a house like this is just very troubling for us. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Question for you. I'm going to ask staff to pull up the site plan and the rear elevation drawing. And neither of you can answer this, but I'm hoping that you might point out if there's specific instances on the rear elevation or on the site plan, whether it be a platform or a certain window that are creating these concerns.
Yeah, so if you, in terms of the pictures we were provided with, the design is like this. Yeah, I don't know if you have this picture or not.
Yeah, we'll ask staff to just be mindful, because the, those that are tuning in online can't see what's going on in the hearing room, so just so everyone understands.
Okay, so I'll mention them. So on the third floor, you have doors, a walkout. It's, looks like a glass door enclosure for that walkout. And then across the whole second floor, they, you know, they look like doors as well.
As well as windows. Instead of windows, there's only one window.
There's one window that's short, and everything else looks like a door. I can't tell what they are, but we have walkout doors on the back of our house.
Yep, yep.
And these look like the same. Now, at the moment, they don't have anything on their second floor, but I imagine that they could add a balcony if they chose to at some point as well.
If it complies with the bylaw.
Yes. But I'm just saying that if they're doors, they have the opportunity to do that.
Yeah. Well, no, I will, I will say this. I mean, you can put doors, right, and you can put a Juliet guard on there, but if you want to access that and establish patio, you got to comply with that. Typically, again, I'm not a zoning examiner, but I imagine there's a size limitation. I would imagine probably four square meters. So, again, not to say that they couldn't put a small, you know, if it complies with the bylaw. Otherwise, they're back here before us, right? And we really got to take the drawings at, you know, the way that they're presented. If they're showing us one thing, we got to, we got to take that at face value. And if they're going to build something that isn't in line with what's been approved, they'll be called on it, right?
Okay, so.
Could I add something?
Yeah, sure.
Your concern was with the second floor and the windows, which are quite large, and that possibly they could access a deck. If you look at, if we could get the second floor plan up, you'll see these patterns that are on that deck. Those are skylights. You can't actually, you could walk out there, but all you could do is walk around the edge.
Yeah, it's a skylight on one side, I believe, on that one outdoor.
It's a pitched roof on the other side. So there's, there's really nowhere to use as a deck out there on the second floor. You see what I mean? On the, it's on the screen there. See where it's blue? There's a, there's a square on the right-hand side. That's a pitched roof, so you can't walk out there. And then there's a skylight on the other side. The only place you could walk would be around the skylight. And that's assuming, and the applicant doesn't appear to have, and Mr. Bronski can correct me if I'm wrong, he hasn't appeared to propose that that be a deck. But I just, I just wanted to clarify and answer your question. They could walk out. There are certain obstructions there that would make that untenable.
Okay, that's fair. So, you know, going back to our original comment, then, the third floors are biggest concern.
Yep.
Because looking down straight into our backyard. As it stands right now, with some of the plans that were provided, it looks like along the west side, they have a bunch of new trees. They have nothing along the backside, though.
Mm-hmm.
We have no clue what they're doing there. And as it stands, we try to put up, you know, evergreens on our side, but we have, we don't know what they're going to do. And so this matter of privacy is paramount for us, and we'd just like that addressed somehow, if possible.
Yep, understood.
And also the length of the house.
Well, yeah. I didn't want to get into that, because it's a nice design. But, you know, when you have the red part on that one sheet as their bump out.
Yep, yep.
What I noted in my letter is that, you know, between the bump out that they suggest and then that outdoor room, you're probably talking about two hundred extra percent space relative to what they're normally permitted. And then you add on a third floor, which is probably another, for a house this size, given its width, probably twelve hundred, maybe fifteen hundred square feet. That's all.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you for those submissions. No further questions? All right. We have some other speakers. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Linda Kay. I live at thirty-two Glen Allen Road. This is the residence immediately to the east of the application. We've lived in this home for twenty-two years, been in the area for forty-six, so I'm well aware of the neighborhood and many applications for you in the past. I'd like to begin by saying I do support the application, but I would like to have this opportunity to make a few comments with respect to the application, and have you or the agent for the applicant respond if my, if I have any misunderstanding. First, I'd like to speak to the letters of support as it relates to the planning department condition. Secondly, regarding tree protection as it relates to the forestry condition. And finally, the site plan as it relates to a retaining wall, which is noted to be replaced on the drawing. So going back to the support letters, my support letter indicated that I had no objection with the application. We reviewed, as did many in the neighborhood, the drawings by Richard Wengel Architect. He's an excellent architect, and his design is sensitive to massing in the neighborhood. The third floor roof drawing is not a box. It is designed on an angle to reduce the impact. The application has been made for a number of variances. In their totality, to me, they relate to the building design. In the past, I have seen that proposed variances are tied to the elevation drawings. The planning department has asked for a condition that the application be conditional upon the length and depth variances being substantially in compliance with the east elevation. I would ask that because many of our neighbors and ourselves have seen this north elevation, and it's extremely attractive and makes the proposals also supportive, that the north elevation also be included and tied to all of the variances. So my request to you, and I don't think this is an objection to the owner or the agent, and if so, I ask that they say so, but I ask that all of the proposed variances be tied or in substantial compliance with the elevation drawings submitted by Richard Wengel Architect that were submitted in support of this application. Secondly, my point is on tree preservation. I'll try to speed up a bit here. Forestry has asked for a condition. We have trees all along our east side yard. It provides us with a great deal of privacy protection and also that of the owners. The owners have indicated that they do wish to help in protecting these trees as well. And I, just my understanding that as part of the building permit process, they'll be required to make application to urban forestry. And at that time, they will address tree protection, hoarding, any requirements for excavation along the rear yard that relate to tree preservation, if that's the case. I am satisfied with the condition imposed by urban forestry, and we will deal with this matter at the building permit stage. I do not foresee it as a problem. The owners seem to be supportive and cooperative on this matter. My final point is on the site plan. We have a retaining wall, which you can probably see in the, in the drawings. It's in need of repair, and the owner has indicated that this will be replaced as part of the construction of the building. It will likely fall over anyway. I just wish to note it there because it does provide some tree protection, and some additional hoarding may be required. The applicant has responded to my request that it's shown on the site plan that there is an existing retaining wall and that it will be replaced. And it's my understanding that this will be also handled at the building permit stage. So that, to summarize, I support the application with the request to amend the condition by staff that the north elevation be included and all of, and all of the variances be tied to that. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I guess it is good afternoon now.
It is, yes.
My name is Jeffrey McKay. I reside at two six, two-seven-one Dollish Avenue with my wife and my two sons. Our property is behind the applicant's property, three houses from west to east. We have lived in the community for twenty years. We've raised our two boys in the community. We're involved, and we want to preserve the integrity of the community. I've been a Beaver Boy Scout leader in the neighborhood. I've coached the Lawrence Park Association soccer and baseball leagues. So we're, we have roots, long-time roots in the community, and want to, you know, see what's right for the neighborhood. We oppose this application. We oppose this application in its entirety. You'll note that there are some letters of support, some letters in opposition. So the neighbors that are in opposition want to maintain the existing quality of the neighborhood. This neighborhood is zoned for two stories, not for three stories. Building a three-story building in a prop, in a neighborhood that's zoned for two stories is not a minor variance. How can adding a floor be a minor variance? I believe the application must fail on that aspect whatsoever. Second major opposition, point of opposition is the height. There's a ten-meter zoning height rule. They want to build ten point eight-one meters. Doesn't sound like a lot, but let's convert that to old-fashioned imperial. That's an extra yard. But we're pushing the envelope, right? We're pushing the envelope, and how many times do you push the envelope until you break the envelope? Respectfully submit that this is not a minor variance. The third floor encompasses an overbuild of the entire property. That's why they require eight amendments, eight variances. This is not a one-application variance, like we've heard this morning. Eight variances, including a third store, an additional third store, and an additional point eight-one meters. In addition to that, the configuration of the street is important. This street runs slopes from west to east. Everything in the neighborhood slopes from Mildenhall down towards Bayview Avenue, Dollish, and the subject, the subject street, Glen Allen, all slope west to east. So the additional height is exasperated for us downhill, so to speak, including our house. Now, the other point being, you know, we are setting precedents, and we continue to set precedents. And I support Doug and Claudia Meehan who spoke earlier. They're the immediate neighbors. They're the ones who are going to have the third floor look down directly into their backyard. I'm three houses over, but the two houses directly behind our house are older, original builds in the neighborhood. They are and probably will be candidates for teardown and top-ups. And so I'm going to be facing, most likely, the same problem as the other neighbors on the street, as people continue to try and push the envelope, ask for these major variances, and ask for third-floor extensions to their properties. We have a set of rules. Area's zoned for two stories, not three stories. Let's start enforcing the rules. Every time you go a little further, a little further, a little further, we're not just pushing the envelope, we're busting the envelope completely. Doug mentioned the fifty percent adjustment. You know, when you're playing, when you're playing a football game, people talk about moving the goalposts. So think of if you're on a football field, and a hundred-yard football field, and somebody moves the goalpost fifty yards. Seems unfair. So if you want to change the bylaws, then change the bylaws. But let's stop, let's start putting some reasonable limits and start enforcing the rules and the laws with respect to these applications. You know that you have four tests to make. First test of the four-test rule, is this just a minor variance? Completely fails. This is not a minor variance. It must fail. Is it desirable? Does it comply with the zoning bylaws and official plan? I respectfully submit that it does not. There's two aspects where it fails on the four tests. As you know, if an application fails on even one of the four tests, subject to a committee of adjustments, the application must fail, must fail. That's what the appellate courts have ruled. So I respectfully submit that this is, in fairness, it's a nice-looking property, but it's an overbuild. The application is three stories and two stories. It's incapable of being rectified with all these adjustments. And so I respectfully submit that this entire application must be denied. Thank you, and I'll entertain any questions, if you like.
All right, thank you. Questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your time.
All right. Is anybody else here in person to speak to this item? No. Okay. Staff, do we have anyone else online? No. Okay. So I would like to turn it back to Mr. Bronski at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, I was just going to speak to four things in response, if that's all right. The first, Mr. Chair, is I want to just make sure that the comments about the coverage, because I think there's a bit of a misunderstanding about the difference between coverage and FSI. The inclusion of the third floor doesn't change the coverage. So I understand there's a concern about the third floor, which I'll get to in a minute, but it's not adding FSI and increasing the FSI number. The coverage is the footprint of, of the home and the accessory structure together, and I didn't hear any concerns about that. And from a numeric perspective, where we are today, particularly for the house, which is thirty-seven point seven-three percent, we're within the range of coverage numbers that are approved in the neighborhood. And as I said to you earlier, I actually think based on the existing, as a right envelope and its relationship, in particular to the adjacent property, that coverage is, is actually well-deployed on the site. So the third floor doesn't increase the coverage number by fifty percent or anything like that. So I just wanted to flag that for you, Mr. Chair. Second is, I do thank the neighbor to the east for coming to confirm her support. It's been wonderful that she engaged with our client, and we're extremely appreciative of that. If the committee saw fit to have the variances substantially in accordance with the site plan, and not just the east elevation, but the north elevation, I would have no concerns with that. It's frankly consistent with the planning staff recommendation, a little bit broader, but, but what we're proposing is what our client wants to build, and those conditions, as this committee knows, are quite standard. In terms of the third floor concerns, I just wanted to say two things, and these are my other two points. And the first is, there are three-story dwellings in the neighborhood. We flagged them for you, and we included pictures for the panel. And I just wanted to have those just quickly in front of you. They're on, sorry, I don't have the page number for staff, but it's there. There we go. Thank you to staff. You can see the design as to how those existing third floors fit within the roof line. And as I said to you earlier, not having the third floor wouldn't change the roof line. And I actually think it's a sensitive approach, and I think it goes to the intent of the bylaw, which is not to have three-story houses that look, feel, and function, i.e. flat roof, as three-story houses. And I think the design here achieves that intent and is frankly consistent with those elevations that you And I think the design here achieves that intent and is frankly consistent with those elevations that you see on the screen. And so I don't think it's problematic from that perspective. And then the last thing I would say is just in respect of the relationship to the neighbors at the rear. Again, I thank them for coming. I understand the concerns they have about privacy. I would just say, first of all, the second-floor rear wall is exactly where it's supposed to be in accordance with the zoning bylaw. There's no variance for that. They are windows. They aren't doors. And there is no accessory structure proposed above the first story or the outdoor room. So that relationship really is frankly what's contemplated by the bylaw. I acknowledge that there is a door and window at the third floor cut into the roof to allow access to a very small third-floor platform that complies with the bylaw is necessary for building code reasons. And I would just flag for the committee, it's actually set well back from the rear yard setback. The first story is at 11.7 from the property line. The minimum rear yard setback is 10.43. And the third floor, because of the slope of the roof, it's quite set back. And we know that that glass rail would essentially, it's even further back than the rear wall of the second floor. Page three would, would sort of show the committee that in terms of how it's cut into the roof line. And so I think it's a substantial distance away. I don't think it's creating privacy or overlook concerns. I understand the authenticity of those concerns. I'm not questioning those. But I actually think the design of this appropriately addresses those concerns to ensure that, that there won't be undue privacy impacts. And so, Mr. Chair, those would be the four things I would say in response. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Just give me one moment here. All right. Ask my colleagues, do you have any questions at this time? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much to our agent, Mr. Bronskill, and to our neighbors that came down today. I'm going to take this into committee now for a very brief discussion, followed by a motion. Who would like to get us started? Yes, Mr. Kniffel, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. I appreciate the neighbor's concern. I would like to speak a little bit about the third floor. It's not really, to all intents and purposes, it is legally a third floor. But if you look at the amount of living area, it's about half the space of the second floor. And it's set back from the walls of the second floor and the first floor. It's the sort of step-back that we might encourage if we were concerned with the height of a building so that there is, by virtue of the form that's been selected, the mantard roof, the third floor is set back a substantial distance and therefore is not the same size, and it is not as close as the second floor and the first floor are to adjacent properties. The balcony is a legal requirement for access, and it is in fact within the bylaw and is the minimum size and is allowed by the bylaw, doesn't require any variances. So I think the concerns about the third floor, although I understand them, I, I think in reality, they're not as, as serious as, as the neighbors are anticipating by virtue of the fact that the form has pulled back the third floor substantially from all frontages. And, and I just, I just wanted to mention that because I'm not sure that, not everybody reads drawings the same way. I, I think these drawings are an accurate representation of what will happen, but I do think in reality, the third floor will not be as large in imposition as perhaps is being anticipated.
Yeah, I, I agree with your, with your comments. Not just a step-back of the third floor, but then also an angular plane employed. And then also the use of, we'll call it main walls. They're not really, there aren't any main walls. It's just dormers that pop out. It's also nice to see, I don't want to get too much into the design, but if you notice too, all of the windows on the third are also scaled, smaller than the other two stories. So they read, they read very much as sort of secondary to the, the first and second floor. My main, I guess the main thing that I've been going back and forth on in this really comes down to the height, and that is the overall building height and then the main wall height. A lot of applications that come through in Lawrence Park, and one of the unique things about this area is you have a lot of houses that aren't new and that will, you know, ideally benefit from, you know, consideration that though, like, not everything in this neighborhood is going to be torn down, right? We're not starting fresh. There's a lot of really beautiful houses. Some of the nicest houses actually in this neighborhood are, are some of the oldest. So I think, I've got extra attention towards, you know, the massing, particularly when it comes to heights. Little bit of concern with the overall height and main wall height. But I think I could be supportive of it with a slight modification, and that's just to knock .3 off, the height and .3 off the main wall. I, the immediate neighbor is a new build. If you look on the survey, they've provided us the top-of-roof height. I, I take advantage, sometimes I get surveys, you get top-of-roof heights of adjacent properties. And one of the biggest things, you know, much in the way that when we look at a site plan, we automatically go to the building extents, right, to understand how the proposed footprint of the building, as it sits on the lot, relates to, you know, its adjacent properties, neighbors, right? I'd like to do the same with elevation, right? But in, in most cases, you know, unfortunately, we don't get an elevation drawing that shows, gives us information about how the massing of the adjacent properties reads on the elevation. I have a little bit of concern in maybe pushing it just a little too much beyond the envelope, as one of our neighbors submitted, you know, how much is too much? Aside from that, I think generally, you know, the application is supportable, fit, character. I think some neighbors also noted, you know, that it's a well-designed building that fits within the neighborhood. But we have to, again, when we're, we have variances, like, you know, for that third story, we just have to be mindful that that is not resulting in any massing that detracts or takes away from the built form of the area. Those are my submissions on this. I don't know how, I know, there's a couple architects here today for those that are in the gallery, so curious to see if they have any thoughts on that impact.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I agree with both comments. I don't have much concern with the number of stories. I think it's well thought with the roof shape and also setback. I am looking at the ceiling heights. I agree with you. It could have been lowered the roof slightly because we have like 10-foot ceiling on the second floor. That can be slightly lowered. But it's not something in front of us, so I, I wouldn't object that. And the app again is taking 0.81, which is not that, you know, too far from what we're approved here. So in general, I am supportive of this application. And also the building length is, I think it's, it's nicely designed.
It's nicely, yeah.
Yeah. It's really nice.
There's a, I'll just point to that. There's a really nice, I know they're pushing out into, with that single-story addition, beyond what they're permitted, but there's a, there's a good generous side yard setback to help mitigate that, actually on both sides, right? And, and these are, they're fairly big lots, right? They can support a little bit of pushing out into the backyard, particularly if a single-story, provided that it doesn't create overlook onto adjacent properties, as some of the immediate neighbors brought up those concerns. But I don't see that in this case because as it was brought up, that single-story, there's no access to it. And even if they wanted to, they've got to contend with skylights and vaulted ceilings. You've been, comment, maybe motion or some good discussion on this one?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think I, I actually agree with the comments in terms of the third floor. I understand, but the way that it is designed, I think it's, for me, I understand that it satisfies the, the concerns that they're addressed. So I agree with the comments with my colleague as well.
Yeah. I, I would agree too with the neighbor's request. I had this in my notes that any approval, I think, needs to be tied, certainly for the length and depth, would have to be tied to site plan. And then if there's any variances, variances related to the heights, I think also need to be applied to those elevation drawings to ensure that those angular planes and those step-backs are all honored as proposed. So, yeah, I don't know how you guys feel about the modification of the height, but I will leave it. I'll, I'll put it out there if anybody wants to put a motion forward, see where it goes.
Would you suggest any numeric, like?
Yeah, I mean, I, with respect to the main wall height and the, the overall height, variance is number one and variance number three, I, I would be supportive of those variances as modified. So they're requesting 8.07 on the main wall. I'd be supportive of a 7.85. And with respect to the overall height, I think they're requesting 10.81. I think I'd be a lot more comfortable with a 10.51. It knocks a foot off. I want to make sure, I, you know, we're also, we're dealing, the context is really important. We're dealing with Lawrence Park. It's a very established neighborhood with a lot of time and effort put into the, the built form through these applications. And I, I just want to make sure that we're doing good on the neighborhood too, to make sure we're not, ensure that we're in line with the four tests as it relates to the, the neighborhood.
I would normally agree with you on three, but I think given the, the massing, I'm not sure that that variation would actually be noticeable at all. And I don't think it would address the concerns, as I heard them from the neighbors. So I'm not as enthusiastic about changing variance number three.
Okay.
I, I think numerically, yes, it's .81. But there's been some care taken to develop a profile.
Yeah.
If I could, it's very much like the New York skyline where it goes in and in and in. And, and I think given that, which is respectful of the issues that were raised, I'm not uncomfortable with the variances as they're before us.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree. I, I, I think the, you know, the perspective, the rendering actually is probably the best because we're so used to looking at elevations. But once you see the perspective, you see the step-back, you see the angular plane.
Yeah.
It does quite a bit to mitigate, okay. So a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'll give it a try. I'd, I'd like to move approval of the application, subject to forestry condition number two. And as the planning department has indicated in their report that, pardon me for one second, that relative to variances number five, six and seven, sorry, I've got a block on my screen, six and seven, that building length and, there we go, and maximum building depth, they'd be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan and the east elevation drawings that are attached to the report. Also, in response to the lady that spoke, she was suggesting that we tie the application to the front elevation. Given the form of the building, given how important that is to the success of this application, I, I would like to propose that there be a condition that the massing of the building be as shown on all four elevations.
Yeah.
Because it's a complicated elevation. It's successful, but I think we should tie it to the elevations that are before us.
Substantially in accordance with?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Yes. Yes.
Substantially in accordance with and as amended.
So that would be my.
As amended variance for, to be 39.47, right?
Yes. I forgot that. My mistake. Sorry.
All four, all four drawings.
The amended variance, yes.
I second that.
Yeah.
Variance number four was amended, yeah.
Just mentioned.
Yeah, to 39.47%.
Yeah.
Okay.
I second that.
All right. So we have motion by Mr. Kniffel, second by Mr. Marziani, all in favor. Okay. That's unanimous. The application as modified is approved with condition. Okay. We've got one item left on the morning agenda, which we started and we will go back to now in hopes that we will have all of our parties present.
Mr. Chair, we need Mr. Bartolo back.
Yes, Mr. Bartolo. Yeah, you should. It was a long one. Just to confirm, we're, item 10, right? And we were, okay. All right, so we're just.
Mr. Chair, we, we tried to reach out.
Yeah.
To the neighbor by calling the phone number that was provided, and we still don't see the person logged on.
Yep.
And no one answered the phone.
Okay. So. From an administrative standpoint, last item of the morning, item number 10, 32 Larrabee Crescent. This, as stated before, is proposal to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling within an integrated garage, front porch, rear deck, and rear basement walkout. We heard from the agent, and we tried to get a hold of the neighbor, who appears to be online, but we cannot seem to plug them in. Mr. J. Bobby at 68 Larrabee Crescent. And they're, they're no longer online. Okay, very good. Okay, so let's get the agent back.
Hello again.
Yeah. Just give us a moment. I'm going to ask my colleagues whether or not they have any questions for you or whether you have any other comment you'd like to provide at this time.
Actually, yes, just, you know, the item, the last items are the result of the, you know, becoming this building as a three-story. This is based on the definition. The mid of the basement ceiling is seven centimeters, almost three and a half inches above the established grade. And because of that, this building is like a three-story. And based on that, the deck, on the average grade, on the grade, the, the lower deck, I mean, considered, looks like a balcony on a second story. And this is the result of that. And one more thing regarding the building height. If, if it's possible to display the section on our drawings, we squeezed the ceiling height of the second floor to 8.8 inches to reduce this size. And, and on the, if you see the, the black windows, that's the living area. The ceiling height over there is eight feet, seven and a half inches. We squeezed this area, and because of that, we cannot squeeze more to reduce the main wall height. And maybe it is, and this is, this is the other comment that I had for these variants. And that's all. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All right, all right, we're going to take this into committee now, brief discussion, followed by motion. I have a few comments, but I, maybe I'd like to hear from my colleagues first. See what they have to say. Mr. Bartolo?
Yeah, I can kick it off with some brief comments here, Mr. Chair. I guess the, I'll speak to the ones that are typically most controversial, which is the number of stories and the height. While I, I recognize that this is being proposed as three stories, I don't think it really reads as two stor, three stories. And the overall building height, there is a main wall height variance that's being requested, but overall height still conforms. So from that point of view, I don't think we're out of the realm of supportability. The five-foot setbacks on the side versus six, I think it's still a functional amount of space that is not going to cause any undue stress on them or their neighbors in terms of getting around or getting to the back rear yard. The balance of it, I don't really have any problem with.
All right. My, my one concern that came up with this, you, you didn't raise it, but I, maybe some others have comments. I do like the way that the agent applicant has treated the rear deck and that they have a higher platform and then it steps down to a lower platform, which is good and I think really necessary in this case. I do question though whether or not that lower platform is indeed enough. It is still above that 1.2 meters. 90% of the time, we are looking to adjacencies for privacy on either side. But in this case, there's such a substantial, there's such a, there's such a reduced rear yard setback on both sides, actually, the neighbor that backs on and the subject property, that there's also some onsite overlook, maybe into the rear neighbor. And I wonder whether or not, if that platform, just given its size and the fact that we have a rear yard setback variance, whether or not that is supportable, given the size and the height. And you're not, you don't necessarily have to look to the side, but you're on the deck, you just have to look forward. That's my one concern. Otherwise, I think, supportable. I don't know if others feel similar, have similar concerns or, or not.
I understand the concern. I mean, ultimately, it's a difference of 18 centimeters. And I think to myself, is 18 centimeters going to make a difference if you lowered that deck in terms of the, the overlook impact? I would argue not, not in a meaningful way.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
No other comments? I can bring forward a motion if you like.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, for the reasons stated, I believe it meets the four tests, and I don't think it's going to have an, an adverse effect on, on the neighborhood in a meaningful way. And numerically, I can support these variances. Therefore, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the conditions of the urban forestry memo attached.
All right, so we have motion by Mr. Bartolo, second by Mr. Vazelli, all in favor. Okay, that's unanimous. The application is approved. The time is now 12:58 PM. That concludes our morning session. We will resume with our 2:00 PM list at, in the, in the next hour. All right, see everyone soon.